Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of September 1st, 2022. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised points, Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, public law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2020 schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on township website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have on the Township Civic Clerk website and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have a roll call of board members and also board township professionals, please.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Senator Giede, Mr. Scoville, our absent Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Peasen.
Here.
Mr. Hashtag.
Here.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Here.
Committee Man Delcor.
Here.
Mayor LaPani.
Here.
Vice Chair Julian.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Heck, you're not here.
Excellent. In the evening, we have a couple of meeting minutes for consideration. First one is the July 7th, 2022 meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Peasen.
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Yes.
Committee Man Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor LaPani.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Next, July 28th, 2022 meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Eric, I'm assuming everyone's eligible to vote?
Everybody on the dais is eligible to vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Hashtag.
Okay. Any comments from the dais?
Mr. Wagner, let me speak up.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Peasen.
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Yes.
Committee Man Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor LaPani.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Okay, next, moving on to considerations of resolutions. We have one this evening, KD Hillsborough 441, Inc., with the file number of 22-PB-02-SV. May I have a motion to approve?
The eligible members, gentlemen, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peasen, Mr. Hashtag, Committee Man Delcor, Vice Chair Julian, Mayor LaPani, and the chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, any comments from the dais? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Peasen.
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag.
Yes.
Committee Man Delcor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian.
Yes.
Mayor LaPani.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Okay, we do not have any consideration ordinances, so before we go start with this evening's application.
Now your planning board business.
Do we have plan?
No.
We do not have any. No, but, no, no, oh, we do have planning board, sorry, I missed that. I'm going ahead of myself, so, yes, we do have planning board business. We have the appointment of additional board engineer from Penone Associates, Todd Hay. He was here last time, so hopefully everyone is familiar. Do we need to take a formal vote on the appointment?
There is a resolution before you this evening.
Yes.
I'll move the resolution.
Our second.
Okay. Comments from the dais? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Peasen.
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag.
Yes.
Mr. Chicorelli.
Yes.
Committee Man Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor LaPani.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Welcome aboard, Mr. Hay.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will go to business from the floor for matters on this evening's agenda. Please note that there is a five-minute time limit and also please not ask about any applications that have not come before this board. There would be no comments on that or any potential applications coming forward. And when you do come up to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Craig Berlin. My address is 1 Alsough Street in Hillsborough. I represent a group of people who wish to be objectors to the 303 Amwell, and I'm wondering what the, what we have to do to be named as objectors. Do we have to find, we have to alert anybody? Do we want something in email? Please advise and then we'll follow.
Eric?
You need to put something in writing to the Planning Department indicating that you are seeking objector status on the 303 Amwell. Who the individuals are, send it to Mr. Maskey's office. I will indicate it will be distributed to applicants counsel. It will be placed on the civic clerk. And I can't remember, we have any objectors otherwise, Mr. Maskey, at this moment on this one?
I don't believe so.
Okay, they'll be also advised, but that you need to put a letter on the record. And then obviously, next week in the application, you need to come up and indicate yourself as an objector status and.
Before the meeting?
Before, no, during the meet, at the time of the application.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Second question I have is that I recently attended an environmental commission meeting on 303 Amwell. I'm wondering where I can see their notes and what was handed to the planning board, their opinions.
I guess once they issue their formal meeting minutes, it'll be up on the civic clerk website.
We haven't received them yet, but once we have them, they will be on, posted on civic clerk or they'll be in the office.
I just have to pay your attention, we're six days away from that planning board meeting, and I don't think that you're giving an objector enough time to process all of this. I don't know where I take it from here. I'm trying to do this as a homeowner and with people that I represent on my block, who we feel that we'd like to be heard. And unfortunately, this is all being done. This meeting for 303 Amwell came out of the blue. Notices were not received by people, although council has said that they were sent, but no one received them. All of a sudden, there's a, I look online and I see that there's a planning board meeting two weeks after that. It all seems very, very rushed, and I'd like to go on record to say here, and I'll put it in writing, that I don't think that we've been given sufficient time to digest what's been given out, and we're going to need more time to get things together before September 8th.
Right. I mean, I could just say with timing matters, we take that up with New Jersey State Legislature because they set up those guidelines and they may seem to be rushed, but if they're in compliance with the law, unfortunately.
I understand, I understand it's not your call either, but if you were me and you were waiting to see what the environmental committee was recommending, should I get that a day before, two days before?
Well, it will be part of the package, so you'll see at the same time, we will, as part of the application.
Maybe that's a problem.
Well, but again, there's, first of all, the, the environmental commission is an advisory board, right?
I understand.
So we will get their information and we'll, we'll take that under advisement and we will ask questions and that'll be part of the, the record during the application, which it, which it always is. And we have, we have, one of the members here sits on the environmental commission as part of the legal process that we have to go through. And if there are issues on the environmental report, I can assure you, they will be discussed in full.
Okay, again, just one last question, is that's going to show up on with the rest of the stuff that's on there, the project notes, the submissions and stuff will show up on there?
They will be there until we end that.
I'll keep an eye on it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Joe O'Connell, 20 White Meadow Road, Hillsborough. On the occasion of the first anniversary of Ida, which was devastating to parts of Hillsborough, I would like to encourage the planning board to be proactive in dealing with the consequences of storms like this. There were hundreds of emergency calls to the police and the fire department. They did a fantastic job, but it was a nightmare for them. Over the next few days, there were at least 150 toes of vehicles that had been submerged to some extent or another. There were two fatalities in the township. Anecdotal stories tell of several other close calls. Near to me, Clerico Lane became Clerico River. You can still see the round hay bales stuck in the, in the guardrail where it meets Amwell Road. Zell's Farm was devastated, losing over 1,000 chickens and ducks, along with the related equipment. The hay bales came from the upper pasture at the far end of Clerico Lane. When the Clerico River, actually the Roystrook, crossed Amwell Road, it was five feet deep. It sucked an abandoned car 1,000 feet backwards from its original location towards the Roystrook, making its occupants acutely aware of how close they came to drowning. They got out and walked towards the landing. The floodwaters continued to flow towards Manville, adding to its misery. There are currently a lot of applications for everything going through Hillsborough, several near flood-prone areas or near residential areas. This problem is not going away. There have been four major 100-plus-year flooding events between 1999 and the present that left no way in or out of Hillsborough and also devastated Manville, an average of one every six years. We need to make sure that we don't exacerbate this problem. Back in 2011, when the T E C D zones were made, I'm sure no one envisioned, think that warehouses could mean the mega Amazon-type warehouses that are now being proposed throughout Hillsborough. These type are more, in my opinion, more industrial than those on Stryker Lane, which is zoned light industrial. The T E C D zone is supposed to be more transitional, more neighbor-friendly than that zone. I want to encourage the township planning board to review its flood-prone areas based on current 2021 data, not 1999, and update our master plan with an idea, with an eye to the state plans to put the emergency stormwater regulations into effect. I am not looking to restrict growth and development, but to be smart about it. Hillsborough can lead in being proactive in this vision rather than being reactive to the disastrous consequences of poor decisions that we make now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can assure you that we are very proactive, township committee is very proactive. Unfortunately, the data that you're citing, again, as I said with the other gentlemen, you need to go to New Jersey State Legislature to get these things changed. I hear you, but we are restricted.
Also, pause things and look at the township as a whole, go through with the zoning board, the environmental commission, your own committee, and, you know, maybe think about things in a different light and be proactive about it.
I can assure you we are, and we follow the letter of the law, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 3, 2155, Camplain Road. I have submitted a request for government records through the Open Public Records Act, OBR. I had requested a copy of the will serve letter from the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority regarding providing sewer service to the Sherman tract, which is being called Concord Residences. The response that I got is a letter from the Township of Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority dated June 16, 2020, addressed to Mr. David Maskey, planning director of Hillsborough, regarding Concord Residences on the former Sherman tract, block 86, lot 21, Township of Hillsborough. And it's from Robert A. Houg, H-O-U-G-H, the executive director of the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority. And he states, Dear Mr. Maskey, please be advised that the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority has reviewed correspondence and a revised overall utility plan received from Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners concerning the above referenced project. As you are aware, the original design was to sewer this project via a connection that would have directed the sanitary sewer flows to the borough of Manville. The plans have been revised to connect the project to a manhole located on Garfield Avenue, thus directing the flows to the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority sewer system. I had also submitted in OBR requesting a copy of the records documenting that Manville, Manville's governing body gave approval to permit the sewers for the Sherman tract to be connected to Manville sewers. The response is no such record exists. So why was the original design going to connect the Hillsborough low-income rental housing project to Manville sewers to begin with? I brought this up at the Manville Mayor Council meeting, and I was told they had no records, no one had given permission, and I was told that there are some properties on Camplain Road that are hooked up, that are Hillsborough properties, that are hooked up to Manville sewers, and they're hooked up illegally. So I want to know what's going on with this, what, I'm a property owner directly adjacent to block 86, lot 21. I have received no information regarding sewers coming in over there. I would think, being an adjoining owner, I could have also access to sewer hookups. I have received no information in this letter that I, that I sent that's addressed to Mr. Maskey that states, please be advised that the Hillsborough Municipal Utilities Authority has no objection to the Concord Residences on the former Sherman tract being connected via a gravity sewer to a manhole located on Garfield Avenue. Please be advised that on June 11, 2020, Hillsborough MUA completed a TV inspection of the sanitary sewer on Garfield Avenue, and Hillsborough MUA did not find any issues with the sanitary sewer as the date of the inspection. I trust this letter is in accordance to your request and is acceptable. It doesn't state they're going to serve. They don't state it's going to serve.
Mr. Chigarelli, do you know that, do you know that the MUA is a separate entity than the township? It's a utility body that the township doesn't oversee.
But this body approved this application, and I want to know where the sewers are going to be coming from.
I think you said it right, these is going to connect to Garfield.
Yeah, the letter is correct, the sewer is going to connection at Garfield.
Just like you read.
Just like you read.
Is there a will serve letter from them? Because this is not a will serve letter. They're saying, they're saying they have no problem with it and, and that's it.
Well, as the mayor said, you have the contact.
And then my question also, also, my first question is, where did the original idea come from, the original design that this was going to be hooked up to Manville's with the sanitary.
Well, again, Mr. Chigarelli, that could have been a proposal from the builder and it went to Manville and they denied it, so they had to find another, again, it's all through the MUA. The MUA controls where, where the sewer goes, not the township. That is, it's like calling up PSE and G and asking for a light pole. MUA governs the sewer.
But the development, the application was here, so you're going to say you have nothing to do with any, with no sewer, no water, and you're saying you have nothing to do with that?
No. Again, you hear what you want here. The mayor just told you that the approval was granted, and since if Manville doesn't want it done that way, it, it gets completed in a different fashion, and that's what the MUA has said. Mr. Maskey just told you that, and you refuse to listen to anything that anyone ever tells you.
You're saying the approval was granted. By whom? What approval are you talking about?
Okay, we're at the five-minute mark, so we're going to, and you've been given an answer.
No, it's, okay.
Mr. Chanusak, you're, you're, you've used your five minutes.
My five minutes seem to go by faster than, than five minutes.
Well, you asked, you took five minutes to read a letter. Ms. Chanusak, you used your five minutes. You need to be, you've been.
I've been requesting that you put a timer up there, okay? Because every time I come up, five minutes fly by. It's amazing. I'm requesting that you put a timer on there and let the timer ring at five minutes for everyone.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
Five minutes. I have my timer, I'm watching. Thank you.
I don't, what, what time did it start? Where you showing the five minutes?
Ms. Chigarelli.
Right there. Cass, you want to zoom in so that she can see it when she goes home?
There's, there's a letter.
This is a stopwatch. Mr. Chairman, there are other people waiting. Ms. Chanusak.
There's a letter that needs to be addressed starting this meeting.
Ms. Chanusak, your time is over.
From attorney, I'm requesting that this be addressed before meeting.
Ms. Chanusak, your time is over. Please sit down. Thank you.
I just wrote, for the record, your time, it's five of, five of eight.
I've already got it running.
Okay, all right. We'll do this in five minutes. I have two parts, two questions.
Say your name, please.
David Brooke, seven, winding way. Does the public get to speak before the vote to go into executive session? Since I do not think there is a legal justification to go into executive session, typically reserved when it's attorney-client privilege for matters that are in litigation or anticipated to be in litigation, and what I understand the subject matter of the executive session to be is the legitimacy of the subdivision as it relates to the Homestead warehouses, I forget the number, there's too many numbers, I can't keep track of them. And I do not think that that is legitimate simply because you're the planning board and issues of subdivision and legitimacy should be something that should be held out in the public so we all know what that conversation is about.
And, and Mr. Brooks, it will when that time comes. What has happened is the applicant, and Eric, please correct me, is that he is looking for some answers from Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Bernstein needs to get direction from, from the planning board, and that is really the purpose of the executive meeting, to discuss that.
The purpose of the executive meeting is for the attorney to speak to his client, which clearly fall, and this is the client and I'm the attorney. So therefore, I wish to have a discussion with my client in executive session about legal issues involving the Homestead Road LLC application predominantly related to the issue of the subdivision. I do not give legal advice to the client of this nature in open session, and it clearly falls under one of the nine exceptions, there's more than two, under the nine exceptions of the Open Public Meetings Act. So there will be a vote to go into executive session, but if the board chooses not to vote, that will be the end of the evening because that's what we're going in for.
Okay. Thank you for your fully coherent and logical answer. I want 30 extra seconds, though. Still got time?
You have two, you have two and a half.
All right. The other thing, I, I just want to speak to all of you. I'm, I'm not happy about all of the proposals that are currently being made to the planning board as to, it seems warehouses everywhere. As a longtime resident of this township, and I think almost 20 years counts, maybe not as long as a lot of others, but almost 20 years, I'm watching the township get changed via land use decisions, decisions that all of you are making.
I'm going to pause you right there. We're not making those decisions outright. There's applications, we have to hear them through the legal process, and if they're conforming, then, you know, those get approved, those not conforming have been rejected, and you know this board has rejected, including affordable housing plans that, you know, get overturned by our, by our illustrious judicial system. So, you know, if you're not happy with municipal land use laws, again, my advice again, New Jersey Legislature, they have full power and control to grant things, and I will go back to something, that was a thorn in this, in this township going back a number of years ago about the off-track wagering facilities, where the legislature unanimously voted that as a permissible use regardless of what townships may have put into their zoning. So they would have the full capability to do the same with the topic that you, that you are of interest is warehousing, so.
No, I appreciate that, although I think in this case, it's up to all of you. And here's the thing, I think that these decisions are damaging and likely destroying the reasons why I moved here. So I'm asking each of you to remember that a proposal to build anything, like for example, warehouse, can and should be denied, I'll use that word again, denied, if it does not serve the best interests of this township. Denial does not mean that the applicant can't build there, right? It just means that we expect you to only approve an application if it serves the best interests of all of us, the residents of the township, as well as yourselves, you're all residents. A number of you have reminded me that I was a candidate for township committee. Thank you. I'm not running for township committee this year, however, one of you, Mr. Chicorelli, is running for township committee, and others already serve there. So when I ran for office, people asked me how I stood on issues, and I just want to ask each of you that question.
That is denied because we can't be, we can't prejudice any type of anything that we haven't heard.
Right, right, Mr. Brooks.
So you are, and I'm going to also remind you also that you are an attorney and you know better, so.
No, no.
Come on, stop, stop with the games, okay? No, I'm getting very serious here. I, I, I'm tired of games that come up here and trying to do gotcha moment.
Are you not playing?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Get to the point, get to the point, you got 30 seconds.
You know how to take the scheme out of somebody, okay? You're good at that. My question is, where do you stand? This room is not the place for a response, but I and others in this room will be asking each of you individually.
We can't do that. You can't do that.
We can talk to anybody we want, right?
And they're going to say, no comment.
I'm hoping.
Because you want to put us in legal jeopardy. Again, stop the games for political purposes. We know what's going on here. Do you have something serious?
Can't comment on applications that are in process, okay?
Understood, understood.
Either way.
Look, obviously, I'm getting your goat, my apologies. I'm not trying to do that.
Yes, you are. Come on. Get your.
Mr. Chairman.
My only last statement of my main is I'm hoping that you are with us and not with them.
You can't say that now, you're at the end of the application.
Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of the record and for the public at large, board members sit in, in the planning board in what is ostensibly a quasi-judicial capacity. They are required to take in the evidence that comes before them, the testimony of various professionals, the public and the like, and render decision based on recommendations in the law. Going up and talking to them about what they feel about a specific application is violative of their oath as serving as members of the planning board, will conflict them out, and will end up with a situation where we could end up with a judicial action taken from Somerville because I have, do not have a forum of board members who can participate because people have tried to get them into, as the chair refers to, a gotcha moment. So no one is going to answer you, no one is going to give you the satisfaction of telling you how they feel or don't feel about an application, and going up to them and asking them how they feel about an application and not getting a response and saying, you people are not looking out for our best interest, is not what they are required to do. They are required to hear the evidence, hear the testimony, hear the comments of the public, and render decision within that context. So to the extent it is a quote gotcha close quote moment, there are none, they're not allowed to be, and anyone who does that puts him or herself at risk relative to any specific application.
I did not say talk about a specific application. I'm talking about, I'm talking about land use. You folks are responsible for land.
Yes, I know.
My five minutes is up, and I want to thank all of you for your generous time.
Thank you.
Hi, Merrill Bisberg for Hickory Hill Road. I wanted to ask about ordinance 2022-10. There was a report that was completed on May 2nd for a zoning analysis, and I believe that was brought to the township committee, it was sent back to the planning board who approved it. The ordinance has rezoning of several lots, including one that looks to be potentially a warehouse lot. These were to be rezoned, that lot and several others were to be zoned to residential. The, the ordinance was tabled. Did anyone from the township committee go back to the planning board and explain why this was tabled? And can you give more information because it's very unusual for the township committee to table an ordinance?
No, I think you need to ask, go to township committee meeting and ask them why they tabled it because.
Well, actually, no, it was RA district was originally not residential, it's RA, originally agricultural, which has a different zoning requirement. So we went back to have more discussion with the planning board and Mr. Maskey in general as to what the overall theme of the district would be, which I believe we're going to have at our next meeting, a business meeting to go over that was not just scheduling conflict with August not having a lot of meetings, that's all.
So you're planning to bring this back?
Yes.
And does this mean, I think at this time, one of those lots is corporate or light industrial or something. or something, I know it's not to ECD. Is it gonna remain that way until this discussion is completed? I mean, because this report was done in May, and I believe there's, to David's point, another warehouse application coming in on one of these districts. And if this had been changed, that probably wouldn't have happened.
Not necessarily.
Well, it certainly would have been a better shot, so-
Well, there's rules of time of application which rule over when something is changed.
The application you're referencing had been deemed complete prior to the last introduction, so unfortunately, it wouldn't have mattered.
So why would you even propose to change it if the application were deemed-
We did a study of the CDZ in '05, and this is something, actually, it's been coming up for the last 20, 30 years, we look back, it was originally GI, then it was CDZ, and it's, if you read the report, it shows how the zones have shrunk over the years, and this is just one way of cleaning up the zoning in the township and making it more appropriate to the surrounding land uses.
The other question is, just going back to the, to tonight's executive session, the language in the Public Records Act-
Is the mark?
I'm sorry. The language in the Public Meetings Act is pending ongoing, attorney-client privilege, pending ongoing or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation, including attorney-client privilege. The threat of litigation must be more than theoretical for this exemption to apply, so-
That's not what the statute says, first of all. The provision is NJSA 10:4-12B7, which talks about pending or anticipation, pending or anticipated litigation of matters of attorney-client privilege. This falls within the category of matters of attorney-client privilege and may be anticipated or pending litigation at some point, but it is definitely matters of attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
Just so we're clear, though, because I want the entire public, because this ridiculous game of the executive session, all it means is, there's a, we have understanding with our counsel, if there are some legal issues that we need to understand that don't get discussed, but we cannot take action during that executive session, we will not be voting on things, we don't, all that has to be done in public. So, you're gonna keep hearing people come up for political purposes to say that somehow executive session is some secret taboo little thing, that we go back there and make all these decisions, so you can't comment? That's garbage. You will have every opportunity to comment on the things that come up when we are done with the executive session, and we have our counsel provide us with information, so please-
I just want to mention that the subdivision was brought up at the very first meeting in May, and Attorney Bernstein said, you know, we could just reject this thing right now because the subdivision isn't done. So he was very public about it. So why are we going privately now? I mean, this is, this is an application, it's supposed to be heard in public, reporters are supposed to-
And it is. Stop insinuating backdoor conversations or things being by the-
I'm not, I'm talking-
You are insinuating.
And in fact-
30 seconds.
If you look at the affordable housing application, I think he advised you in public, and you still decided to reject that application. So it doesn't even have to do with that. It can be done in public, it was then.
No, it doesn't have to be done in public, I'm choosing not to do it in public, the board down the road can decide to follow my advice or not follow my advice, it's advice, but I am not having a conversation of this nature initially in the public. I may at some point after I discuss this with the client, but I'm not going to discuss it before the public, and I don't recall certain things of what they could and could not resolve, but okay, I'm not gonna go back and look at the minutes from four months ago as to what I did or didn't say, but I want an executive session, I have the right to have an executive session, and I'm asking the board to grant one.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein, five minutes are up.
Thank you.
Rich Garman, 53, Winding Way. I'm hoping to get just some clarification on a process for these applications. When exactly is a variance required? I've been going through a lot of the zoning ordinances, and quite a few of them have, like, a lot of weird requirements. I'm just gonna use an example, let's say an application requires picnic tables, and they don't have that in the plan, does that require a variance?
Well, David, you wanna start?
Sure. An application comes into our office, and we review it against the zoning ordinance, and as you've probably seen, it's pretty long and complicated, so we go through it, starting with the zone that it's in, is it a permitted use, for instance? Then there's all sorts of design guidelines, pulp requirements, conservation requirements, et cetera, and we will make a list of all the variances and waivers that are required. And when an applicant then comes before the board, they have to provide testimony justifying all the requests, all the variances and waivers that are requested. So that, that list is established when any application comes into our office.
Okay, so all of the requirements on there, they have to meet, or you guys review-
Either they meet, so yeah, so let's say, for instance, they're supposed to be 20 feet from a property line. If they're not, then it triggers, yeah, so any of that stuff that's in there, if they're, if they're not doing it, for whatever reason, they have to request either a variance or a waiver, depending on how it's worded in the ordinance. So they can't just say, I'm not doing it. They have to get a variance, the board's permission to not do that, let's say, or to do something.
Okay. The other thing I'd like maybe you could define is, I couldn't find anywhere where the board or the township defines a truck depot versus an overly large warehouse with an exorbitant amount of trucks. Is that defined anywhere?
No. No, it's sort of a, Mr. Bernstein can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you don't define something in the ordinance, it's the commonly accepted definition of a term, Webster's definition, for instance. But so, for instance, go ahead.
Not everything is necessarily definable. The land use law doesn't define it, the law doesn't necessarily define it. Warehousing and truck depots, some people will argue, are interchangeable. In other situations, they're not. So I think it's gonna turn on each and every case and each and every requirement. And if the board ultimately gets to hear these applications, they're gonna deal with those issues.
I mean, the reason I'm asking is, obviously, I've come across the different ordinances, and some they spell out, you know, you can't have a truck depot. So, it'd be nice to know what you define as a truck depot.
Thank you.
See no one else, so we are gonna, oh.
My name is Tony Galupo, I live at 44 Franklin Drive. I'm talking about-
You gotta talk indoor.
We received, myself, 44 Franklin Drive, received a notice from the township that they were gonna consider rezoning the area behind us at 1170 Millstone River Road. They were gonna change it from the '05 that it was and move it into something RA, I believe was the background. Now, the reason I'm up here today is because soon after we received this, we also received the certified mail from the applicant that let us know that they were also doing their DEP thing. The dates were within four days of each other. This wasn't something that was prompted by residents. Nobody, I don't think, knocked down your door and said, hey, let's go. We already knew that it was in the wrong zoning area, so we had already been in that road. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that you sending this out, saying that, you know what, we're gonna go ahead and rezone that, and then the application hits, it's almost like you just tried to rezone it to prompt them to file an application and finish the DEP stuff, because the dates are identical, and everything came certified mail from them right after that. And it's unsettling, because you're already checking the files each day to see whether or not your property is up for, you know, information and what you can see on it. Every day, it's like a medical test, like, I'm sorry, nothing else available that I can see from my plans from behind my house, even though we know there's stuff in play. So we can't see it, and each day you check, and then you get this, and you're like, maybe, just maybe, they're gonna rezone this and fix that problem. And then, right away, like, I'm sorry, we got an application again. It's sadistic for the people who are already stressed about what's going on in the community, and then having to get these notices next time for future reference. Know the stress that this caused as compared to, don't do the change if you have something in the mix of it. Because it really leads people to a position that maybe there's gonna be hope, and then it just gets dashed again, and we're right back here for the next meeting. So I understand that you are, you know, you feel that there's underlying agendas here. I live, and my property's right behind the building, and it's 40 feet tall and 150 feet away, and I can't do anything about it. So please understand that it isn't all politically motivated, and it isn't something where we prompted it to say, hey, by the way. So just understand that there's a lot more to it than, the people are concerned, not because there's things coming up in November, there's people are concerned because their lives are at stake in that regard. The noise may really upset people in a negative way. So, thank you for your consideration on that for the next time.
All right, so I just want to set up some ground rules for this evening. I know Mr. Bernstein's already spoken to the applicant's attorney, that we're gonna be going, looking to go into executive session about 9:15, 9:30?
Don't worry about this, Senator.
About 9:15? Okay. So it's about 8:15 right now, so it's probably gonna mean that we're gonna get to just one of the, I'm gonna say, professionals' testimonies this evening, so this will be continuing at some point down the line. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant for this evening, just Homestead Road 229 LLC, with a file number of 22-PV-05-S/MSPV, with the time of decision of September 21st of this year, which I'm sure we're gonna have to get that extended. So, Counselor, I will let you turn it over and then-
Mr. Counselor?
Oh, sorry.
I'm gonna recuse myself for the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alexander Fisher, I'm counsel for the applicant, Homestead 279 LLC. I'm with the firm Savo Shaw, Corsini, Warner, Gillespie, O'Grady, and Fisher. As you know, this application is seeking minor subdivisions-
Fisher, I'm gonna ask you, you're gonna have to speak up a little bit, it's not the microphone, it's just right next to you. You need to just speak up a little bit.
Final, major site plan approval for the construction of a 9,663 square foot, two-story office, and 127,750 square foot warehouse, with a total building square footage of 137,413. Also seek to subdivide existing Lot 12 into two lots. The total area of the existing Lot 12 is 17.1185 acres, the subdivided lot will be, Lot A in the front will be 5.4106 acres, and Lot B will be 11.7079 acres. So, I assume Mr. Torriello, the objectors' counsel, would like to place his objection to the notice on the record?
Thank you, counsel. Yes, my name is Joseph Torriello, I represent resident objector, Sandro Iannella. I sent a letter to the board dated August 30th, 2022, I would like to make sure that that is placed into the record, and I would like an opportunity to comment on Mr. O'Grady's letter of August 31st, 2022, and to ask the board to consider the objection that I have raised, and would urge the board to carry this application because of a defective notice. And if, you know, if I could be heard on it, I will continue, but I'm looking to-
Yeah, I'm interested in what you feel, the results of what you perceive as a deficiency in the notice, what is the ramification?
You can sit down.
You don't need to be formal.
Thank you, Mary. So, just briefly, Mr. Iannella has been a resident in Hillsborough since 1980, he owns two residential properties that abut the subject property in question, and as counsel indicates, this has to do with a minor subdivision and major site plan application for almost 128,000 square foot distribution center. Our objection is not with the proposed use, as we understand that warehouses are permitted in the light industrial zone, our objection is to the, with respect to the proposal, that it is too intense for the property, the subject property, and significantly and negatively impacts the Iannella properties. The size and scope is so ill-fitted for this specific lot, that the applicant seeks 26 design waivers and nine ordinance variances, which I think speaks to the inappropriateness in terms of the plan that is before the board and the lot size. The size and positioning of the proposed building and the layout of the loading parking area has forced the engineer to position bio-retention basins 14 and 15 in an area that is too close to the Iannella property, and by doing so, prevents the ability to provide the required buffering.
Just ask if this was-
And with respect to, with respect to my objection to the notice, that goes to, that goes to, and Mr. O'Grady's letter states, and he underlines, that buffers shouldn't even apply, and that it's not applicable, but in the plan that was submitted, he's seeking the very variance waivers that on August 31st, he writes saying that they don't apply. So he's contradicting his own application, and two of the variances that are listed are not in the notice. So I would submit to the board, the application which lists the required, the requested variances, two of them are not in the notice. So that is prima facie defective, because the notice has to reasonably inform the lay public of what the application entails, and if the notice doesn't list the variances requested, it's defective.
Okay. I'm just gonna do something real quick, because I'm cutting to the chase here. How many here this evening are here for tonight's application? Looks like we got the public here, so I'm not sure the, what would be the advantage of carrying this any further, we got a pretty large crowd here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could just have Mr. Bernstein-
Yeah, Mr. Bernstein.
This is not a how many people, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, how many people on the audience issue? It's a notice issue on whether or not the notice complied with the requirements of the municipal land use law. If the notice is defective, the fact that we have a large crowd of people here who got notice doesn't make the notice less defective because they got the notice. The notice may be defective because it fails to indicate all of the items that are purportedly being sought, so let, since-
Let me get to the legal- No, no, you get to the legal chase, because I read, I read his letter, and he was concerned about the public not knowing whether or not they should show up.
For the purposes of a record, Mr. Torriello's complaint about the notice are twofold. One, that the notice fails to reference that variances are required from ordinance provisions requiring, I'm reading from Mr. Torriello's letter of August 30th, so if I'm missing something, I'm sure he will tell me I'm missing it. A 60-foot buffer with adjacent to residential lots, not merely the 20-foot buffer with requirements adjacent to non-residential lots, and two, an earth and berm between loading and residential lots. That's the claim that the notice is defective. Mr. O'Grady, who is being represented this evening by Mr. Fisher from his office, indicated in a response letter that the objectors mistaken that a 60-foot buffer requirement relief is required. The clear language of the ordinance is that stormwater basins are permitted within required buffer areas pursuant to Section 188-38 of the Township Code, notably, and I'm not reading the quote, but notably, Mr. Maskey does not identify a 60-foot buffer as a variance in his report. Also, the use of the adjacent lot is a Mason Recon contractor and residential rental, rental residential unit, so it's not clear that the use is even residential. As to the berm issue, it is the council's comment, and Mr. Fisher can also correct me, is that they meet the requirements of the code, most notably Section 188-38.11 related to Section 188-107.1.G8A, and they meet the two of the requirements, and that the potential variances is in the notice as to the buffer, as for buffer design requirements, a variance may be necessary if the applicant cannot demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that the existing vegetation provides a sufficient year-round screen, or if the existing vegetation needs to be enhanced by additional plantings and/or fence or berm. First of all, if- First of all, if the board determined that the notice is not defective, Mr. Torriello is well within his rights on behalf of his client to seek judicial review of that either now or at the conclusion of the application. Mr. Fisher, on behalf of his firm, I'm sure is well aware, in his younger days when he appeared before this board more often, is well aware that his client now takes a risk relative to the application as it relates to a defective notice, which would, under the law, render the application approval, if the approval is ultimately granted, I underlined the word ultimately, could undo the ultimate granting of the notice, of the application, because the notice was defective, therefore making the entire application defective. Obviously, I leave it to both counsel at the moment to whether or not they can come up with a solution to this issue, or I'll leave it to the board with the understanding that whoever doesn't like the board's decision has the right to contest it at an appropriate point and place and time.
If I could just respond to the legal arguments from Mr. Torriello.
Got to talk up a little.
There is no requirement in the MLUL, as made clear by the courts in Satah, Shakur, and Pearl Mart, that you list every single variance. Courts have been clear about that. You do not have to list every single variance. You only need to be able to show that the nature of the matter is to be considered is listed and to ensure the members of the general public who may be affected by the nature and character of proposed development are fairly apprised thereof. So it's not an absolute requirement, and in fact, this is one of the most comprehensive notices I have ever seen in my career. Over 1,600 words. It goes through every single design waiver, which you're not required to do. It goes through variances. It describes in detail the project. In addition, it has catch-all language. So if, it's been found before by the courts that if you have catch-all language, that is sufficient as long as the overall nature of the project is discussed in the notice. So we would submit that the notice is good.
And I will rely upon Pearlman v. Lacy Township, 295 NJ SUPER 234, 237, and that a board's decision regarding this issue is a question of law and as such, any appellate review would be de novo, and that it is a proper notice, is a condition prerequisite for the zoning board's exercise of its authority. And notwithstanding the thousand letters or words in the notice, it did not include two of the most significant zoning requests that directly impact my client's property. And the suggestion that, and I just want to comment too, because Mr. Bernstein read from Mr. O'Grady's letter, and it's incorrect to suggest or assert that ordinance 188-38 automatically or blanketly allows a stormwater basin to be, basin to be placed within a buffer. That's not what the ordinance says. It makes it clear that in doing so, that the buffer areas and conservation easements utilized for the purpose of provide, have to be, provide screening reviews for reducing noise and perception beyond the lot, as well as for the protection of environmentally sensitive resources where appropriate. It gives a definition of what is meant to have a buffer, and it is conditioned and tied to the stormwater basin. It's not either or. It's if you're going to do it, you have to have a buffer, which has to be 10 feet, and the proposed detention basin is 2 feet for my client's property. So I would submit, it is impossible with 2 feet between the detention basin and my client to comply with the ordinance or to put any buffer in. The only suggestion is a string of pin oaks, which is deciduous. It's not evergreen. It's going to have root problems, and we can get into all of this with substantive testimony at the time.
The issue of whether or not Mr. O'Grady/Fisher's client can comply with the zoning-
That's why I stopped.
As you are well prepared.
You're right. That's for another day.
Is for another day.
You're right.
The issue here is, you know, what lawyers love to argue, law, is a legal jurisdictional issue. Does the board find the notice to be defective? You've heard the arguments from both sides, gentlemen, as to whether it is or it isn't. Obviously, somebody's not going to be happy with the decision of this board.
So I'm just going to ask the question, just, so if we should grant that the notice was insufficient?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, not used to this. So if we should decide, just as a general question, that we decide that the notice is sufficient, that does not preclude the objector, depending on what, it goes on, to then object to the decision, correct?
That is correct. Nor does it prevent the objector from contesting the application after the application, claiming, among other things, the board did not have the appropriate jurisdiction because the notice was incorrect or insuffi, I hate to use this word, but I will, insufficient.
So it would appear to me it would be the Mr. O'Grady's firm who would be risking the most.
That is correct.
So if, I would say if they feel that they, at their peril, would want to proceed on, knowing that peril, I would say that, I would leave it to them, because they're the one to lose the most, and your client's full knowing that that's what's going to happen.
We're ready to proceed.
Why is everyone looking at me? Well, I mean, I read both. I'm not seeing that there was anything that would suggest that it was completely, you know, deficient. I mean, I saw Mr. O'Grady's letter, and I think the case law he cited is persuasive, but I think it just says it met the intent, and I think the argument here was the concern about for, for the public, whether or not they need to either attend the hearing or do additional research, whether or not this impacted them. And I think that has occurred here. I don't see anything in the case law that you said. Your case law just says in generalities, you got to have everything in it, but did the case law actually cite something that was very similar to this? I didn't see that in there, so.
It says that you have to be reasonably apprised, and as the chair-
Reasonably apprised.
Well, I can't be reasonably apprised if I don't know that the, that the, that the variance requested directly impacts my client because it's not listed in the notice.
I would just note that this applies to impacting one property, I believe, and that homeowner is here, represented by counsel.
I've placed my position on the record. I understand the chairperson's position. And I would just, I would just say, at some point, if, it seems that the board is appearing to proceed tonight, at some point, without waiver of my right to explore, well, remedies, we will be introducing the testimony of a planner, Christopher Meelick, and I just want the board to know that at some point.
I think what I'm going to do is a roll call here because I want to be-
First of all, motion, but just for the purposes of the record, Mr. Torriello is well aware, he and I have had conversations off, he has objector status, his client has representing objector status, and as an objector, he knows what the rules are relative to what he can and cannot produce and what opportunities he has, whether it's to cross-examine the witnesses of Mr. Fisher and/or present his own testimony or a combination thereof, and the determination of whether the notice is or is not defective doesn't preclude him from any of those rights and privileges.
So I'm going to make a motion for us, for the board to proceed with the application this evening.
And determine if the notice is not defective.
And that the notice is not defective.
I'll second it.
No, 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 no. I'm throwing it out there, I don't think I can make that motion.
You can make a motion.
Okay, I'm here, okay. Usually don't make motions up here. All right. We have a second. Is there any comments from the dais? You guys can speak your mind.
I said my, you know, the onus is on the applicant here in his jeopardy, so, you know, if he's willing to proceed, we have the people here. I think that's something that would go.
All right, so with that, I'm going to go to a roll call, please.
Mr. Ryker?
Yes.
Beazin?
Yes, proceed.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Ms. Greenman Delford?
Yes.
Mary Leponty?
Yes.
Michael Julian?
Yes.
Pierce Surat?
Yes. So we're going to proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
For the purposes of the public record, the determination that the notice is not defective has no impact on the ultimate application itself. It merely indicates the board believes that sufficient information was provided in order for the application to move forward. If the application fails to meet the necessary standards, or the board believes it is, for whatever reason, does not meet the requirements, it can turn it down irrespective determining that the notice is not defective.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. I'd like to call up my first witness, engineer Josh Tiner.
I'm assuming, Mr. Fisher, you're going to address the subdivision first?
I'm not sure. I think we will. I'm going to swear.
You need to make a phone.
Just trying to get this money to get tonight, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Record, please, state, spell your name.
Joshua Tiner, J-O-S-H-U-A-T-I-N-E-R.
Mr. Tiner, for the benefit of the board, could you provide your qualifications in the field of engineering?
Yes, I attended Penn State University. I studied civil engineering, received a bachelor's of science degree, graduated in 1995, was licensed in 2003, and I've testified before many boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My license in New Jersey is in good standing. Believe I testified before this board back in 2005.
Would we ask that he be qualified as a witness in engineering?
Are there any objections? Okay. I was here in '05, so we accept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you go ahead.
Yep. I will get to it, but this will be, I think, A1. This is the aerial exhibit 72122. All right, so the site is located at 279 Homestead Road. The applicant, Homestead 279 LLC, is the entity for the project, the applicant entity, and is the contract purchaser of the post-approval subdivided Lot B, which we'll get to. The tax designation of the property in question, subject to this application, is Block 200.2, Lot 12. Current ownership is 279 Homestead Road LLC, doing business as Striker. I'm referring to this aerial exhibit, which we marked as A1. Traveling from Route 206, New Jersey State Route 206 on Homestead Road, approximately 700 feet on your left, which is the north side of Homestead Road, is the site. This is identified in red here on the plan. With the exception of lots 14 and 15, which are here and here, which reportedly contain residential uses and rental properties, all other surrounding properties are more industrial in nature.
Can you maybe take her?
Sure. Well, you can zoom into some of these areas. This is the site in question, surrounding lots 14 and 15, not identified in number, but that's these two residential lots. These are either undeveloped or industrial, general, commercial, along the front, industrial, all to the east. Lot 12 is in the light industrial zone. The adjacent lots on Business 206 are in the general business zone. That's this, so the zone line cuts through here. Now, the proposed conditions, we'll now refer to this exhibit, which will be A2, which is the exhibit rendering 81022, is a full exhibit, but I will zoom in to make it a little clearer. Would the board like the reduced sized ones handed out? I actually have reduced ones, if you're interested, 11 by 17. These were all submitted, but I can hand them out.
Yeah, colorize.
It's colored. All right, the top page is going to be A1. The second page of the document being provided is going to be A2, which is what is currently on the screen behind the board. And the next document we'll deal with when it comes up. Mr. Fisher, is this part of the submission made by your client as part of this application?
I believe it was submitted by-
You got to talk into the mic.
It was submitted by Mr. O'Grady last week.
So it would potentially be on Civic Clark?
Color version.
Color version or the black and white version?
Whatever was submitted to us would have been posted on Civic Clark.
So for purposes of the record, if the colorized version was not submitted as part of the application, but a black and white was, we're going to ask you to submit the colorized version to the planning department so they can put it up for public information and inspection.
We did submit the colorized version to DeBora about a week ago. So they should be there.
Thank you.
Did you give one of those to the intervenor? Could please.
Mr. Torriello, you might want to sit up a little closer. Unless you want to keep getting up.
My dad had us from college, I'll be sitting on the back of the room.
Doesn't help. All right, this is A2.
This is part of A2. The proposed condition provides a 132,750 square foot warehouse building, which includes 5,000 square feet of office on the first floor and a proposed second floor of 4,663 square feet, giving the building itself a total floor area of 137,413 square feet. That basically gives you 127,750 square feet of warehouse on that first floor. This thing, Lot 12, is 17.12 acres and contains an existing 69,339 square foot warehouse. It's this building here. The building contains approximately 10,000 square feet of accessory office space. There are three existing direct access drives onto the property, as we can see back to A1, 1, 2, and 3 existing driveways into the lot where existing Lot A, so just taking a quick dive into what the proposed subdivision will be. This line right here is the proposed subdivision line, leaving a proposed Lot A, and on this side here, a proposed Lot B. The existing site, again, contains circulation features, parking, loading area, site lighting, some limited landscaping, and the existing building has 50 existing parking spaces on it. The analysis yields that 45 would be required for that existing building. So the subdivision, which will divide Lot 12 into two lots, currently called A and B, will be 5.41 acres for Lot A, approximately, and 11- will be 5.41 acres for Lot A, approximately, and 11.71 acres for Lot B. Plan generally maintains existing circulation such as the parking loading landscaping areas on Lot A, treats Lot B as a new site. Lot B is proposed to be accessed via a 50-foot wide cross-access easement, which is 30,561 square feet. It actually will provide the necessary access, as though it has frontage right on Homestead Road, since this access easement will be existing into perpetuity. As noted above, this application is proposing a 2,750 square foot building. The warehouse use is a conforming use. It's worth noting that the LI Zone has the requirements to comply with the requirements of 188-167 and 188-175L of the Architectural and Site Overlay Zone standards, the spirit of which appears to be most appropriate to the business developments fronting on Route 206. The bulk requirements are as follows. The minimum lot area of 2 acres is required. Lot A complies with 5.4106 proposed. Lot B complies with 11.7079 acres proposed. The minimum lot width of 200 feet is required. Lot A complies with 374 existing and proposed. And Lot B complies with 384 feet proposed. Minimum lot depth of 250 feet is required. Lot A complies with 628 feet proposed. And Lot B complies with 946 feet proposed. Minimum front yard setback of 40 feet is required. Lot A complies with 118.4 feet existing. And Lot B, in my opinion, is not applicable, however, it is 88.5 feet from the proposed subdivision line, which could be interpreted as the front yard, so therefore, 88.5 feet would be provided for the front setback.
Just for the purposes here, what are you considering? Can you identify what you consider the front and rears inside? Because obviously, we don't have an obvious, you know, frontage.
I think Mr. Maskey's interpretation would be the subdivision line is the front.
That is interpreted, I want yours.
I thought of it as a side yard setback.
So what do you consider your front?
There would not be a front yard for this lot, because it does not have frontage on the right of way. But I'm not arguing, I don't have a strong opinion about it.
So then there's no rear, because if you don't have a front, you don't have a rear, so are we going to consider all four sides as sides?
All four sides are sides.
Mr. Maskey?
My report states my belief that it can be a front, side, and rear. And if I might just jump in here before we get too far into testimony, there is a proposed subdivision here for a lot with no street frontage that needs variances. Might I suggest that that topic be discussed before we start getting into site plan requirements? And that perhaps a vote be taken whether or not this lot can even be created? It's a lot with no street frontage.
Which requires Mr. Chairman testimony.
Right.
Seems like we've had this issue come up before.
Sounds familiar, doesn't it?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Please do.
Another question I have is, you know, considering, you know, the configuration of Lot, whether or not the establishment?
Speaking of that, I'm apologizing.
My apologies. If whether or not there could be the establishment of a flag lot as well, I haven't heard anything yet, and I think that should be offered in testimony as well.
Can you say that again? We didn't hear that.
Hold on.
I like that, Mr. Chairman. I didn't do it right the first time. I wanted to make sure that the applicant also could discuss with us why there wasn't a consideration for the establishment of a flag lot, as defined under the Land use law.
Yeah, I mean. Right. I think it's important to lay out what the bulk requirements would be for each, I think, as part of getting to whether or not it makes sense to have a lot, not a budding street, under Section 35 of the MLUL.
Got my answer, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on to the minimum side yard setback of 20 foot being required, Lot A complies with 23.9 existing, Lot B complies with 40 feet proposed. Minimum rear setback of 75 foot required, Lot A complies with 179.4 proposed. And again, it could be interpreted as exceeding 400 feet, assuming the subdivision line is the frontage line, or not applicable. Floor area ratio of .30 is required, Lot A complies with 0.294 proposed, and Lot B complies with 0.269 proposed. Maximum previous coverage of 60% maximum is the limitation. Lot A complies with 54.7 proposed, and Lot B complies with 43.5 proposed. Maximum height, three stories, 60 feet required, Lot A complies with one story, approximately 22.4 feet existing and proposed. Lot B complies with two stories and 47 feet proposed. May note that the 84 resubmission changed the compliant height from 45 feet to 47 feet, so the plans before you have a 47 foot proposed. Minimum gross floor area, 25, oh, that's not. Minimum buffer to non-residential uses, 20 feet is required. Lot A requires relief with 8 feet proposed. That location is here. The road comes in for this part of Lot A, and it's 8 feet away from the property line. It's worth noting that some of the existing is about the same off of the driveway. And then Lot B requires relief with 7.3 feet proposed on the east side, that's here. This little corner, as we come around the radius, 7.3 feet of a buffer in that lot, and 15 feet on the, well, let me zoom out to do it several, and see where we're talking about. 15 feet on the eastern side, which is between fire lane and the property line on the eastern side. And the fire lane is proposed to comply with the request of the fire official. The minimum buffer to residential zoning uses, 60 foot is required, Lot A complies with no adjacent residential. And my opinion, Lot B complies with the intent of the buffering requirement with the proposed trees and shrubbery adjacent to lots 14 and 15, which are the residential lots, those are these here and here. So this is approximately 85 feet to the parking paving area, and the building itself is approximately 214 feet away from those residential lots. So this is a green space in between, that's approximately 85 foot wide. Speaking toward parking, total required parking for Lot A is 45 parking spaces, and the site plan reflects 50 total parking spaces.
Chairman, I'm sorry, they're not talking about the subdivision. Are you going to present the case on why the board should approve this subdivision? You've shown, okay, you've shown how the building could fit conceivably if it were granted, but are you asking the board to approve this subdivision, which would then, well?
Yes.
If for a chance the board denied the variance that you're requiring for this subdivision, the site plan is moot.
Right. Okay, I mean, so the, I mean, the subdivision is two lots, one which has no frontage but has an access easement, in order to provide access to that lot into perpetuity, as though it did have frontage on.
Okay, the Land use law lays out, obviously, in my report, reasons why you might request that variance for not fronting on a street, certain hardships. Mr. Hay has pointed out, why not do a flag lot? Can you address those things?
A flag lot wasn't proposed in this case based on the needs of the existing property owner.
Can you elaborate?
The existing property owner didn't want to.
He didn't want to do it.
Didn't want to do it.
I think it's in the Land use law somewhere, into positive and negative, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, that's kind of what I wanted to hear, because the establishment of this in terms of looking at it from the perspective of a subdivision, you know, in this type of case, you know, you have to weigh the flag lot versus, you know, let's say, an easement. The easement may be in perpetuity, is what was discussed by the applicant's representative. However, the fact is, easements can be vacated in the future. And, you know, there would have to be, obviously, something put on this if the board were even to consider this to have been an access easement. There'd have to be some kind of covenant deed or restriction that would have to be placed on to the rider of the newly created and perfected subdivision.
So in other words, going down the road, if we don't do, if the applicant doesn't seek a flag lot, the, I'm going to call the new proposed lot, at any time, they could just decide to cease that, or rescind that easement. So eventually rendering that property useless, or perhaps whatever structure was put on there inaccessible.
It would be a perpetual easement, so they would not have the ability, once granted, to rescind it.
It's a very interesting case. I mean, I've seen application of landlocked lots, it's not preferred, and Mr. Maskey would probably agree with me on that, because we've done enough cases in many years. I've not seen anything like that before, especially for a warehouse. And I'd like to hear, you know, further testimony, obviously, from a planner and planner's perspective, but in my estimation, for, you know, a more than likely a conforming lot that's remaining, it's quite possible a flag lot could be established.
Can I have a few minutes to speak with my client?
Sure. Let's see where we're at.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could just, before they do, may just, for the board's benefit, this is in my report. Land use law 4055-D35 says, "No permit for the erection of any building or structure shall be issued unless the lot abuts a street." It goes on to say, at 4055-D36, "When the enforcement of that criteria would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, or the circumstances of the case do not require the building or structure to be related to a street, the board of adjustment and/or the planning board, as the case may be, may vary those requirements." So there has to be some testimony put on why there's a hardship, why should this variance be granted?
It doesn't have to be a hardship. It can be the circumstances of the case do not require the building to be related to a street.
Okay, well, I haven't heard that yet. Have you?
And that's why I suggested that from a planning testimony standpoint, I'd like to hear what, you know, is the hardship, and what is the elaboration on it? Because I couldn't remember the code, thanks very much, Dave, not being a planner, not doing too many subdivisions over the last five years, I can tell you that I kind of figured that there was some mechanism in there, Mr. Chairman, that needs to be elaborated on more before the board decides on the subdivision, as Mr. Maskey has alluded to.
I just would like to be very clear, though, that a hardship is not required. If the circumstances of the case simply do not require.
Do you agree you need a variance for this subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
From 35. Could I have a minute with my client, please?
Sure.
Yeah.
15 minutes.
Really?
On this beautiful day here in Hillsborough Township, welcome to News Around Town. I am Pamela Borick, your Township Clerk and Public Information Officer. In case you missed it, over the Memorial Day weekend, the annual salute to military service breakfast parade and commemoration program were all held here at the municipal complex. As you can see, so many community members came out to cheer on our veterans and watch the parade. Check out the link below to watch any or all three videos. Three new sergeants were sworn in and one new lieutenant to the Hillsborough Township Police Department.
I want to thank the committee for moving forward on these promotions. It's exciting times in a police department, work a lot of years, and this is what you shoot for, is to get promoted and get to do a different job and, you know, really exceed in your career. Really, we're promoting some outstanding people tonight, and I congratulate them.
Congratulations to Lieutenant Cuomo, Sergeants Howard, Beveritt, and Wolf. Our township Eagle Scouts have certainly been busy these days. Five Eagle Scouts recently received proclamations from Mayor Sean Lapone and the Township Committee. Let's hear about their projects.
Bassett's Eagle Scout project consists of constructing a wheelchair-accessible picnic table for Anvan Middlesworth Park. Nathan's Eagle Scout project consists of constructing two benches and three RIN birdhouses on Suffin Way walking path. James' Eagle Scout project consists of creating training props for the Woods Road Firehouse, which entailed constructing a wall, breaching simulator, a confined space tunnel, and a host deployment platform. Grevish's Eagle Scout project consists of constructing 15 birdhouses using cedar wood and anti-weather ceiling.
Mayor Sean Lapone read into the record a proclamation honoring June as Pride Month.
Now, therefore, be proclaimed that we, the mayor and the Hillsborough Township Committee, do hereby recognize June as Pride Month, and urge all residents to recognize the contributions made by the members of the LGBTQ community, and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty.
Here are the latest grant awards through the Affinity Federal Credit Union Hillsborough Rewards Credit Card that benefits nonprofit organizations within Hillsborough that support the youth and seniors of our community.
On behalf of the Junior Raider Football Organization, I want to thank you for your continued support. This check will go towards new football helmets this year.
We're on the Board of Steps Together. It's a nonprofit here in Hillsborough that supports families in Somerset County that are impacted by a medical crisis. This grant today will be used to buy a tent for our many events to help bring awareness.
This check will go towards a new lightweight wrestling mat. So thank you so much.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Baseball League, this check will be used towards our buddy program.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Youth Lacrosse, which is the boys' lacrosse program in town, I'd like to thank the mayor and the committee for this money, which will go to helmets and shoulder pads for our players.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Rocket, and Rocket, we want to thank the credit card committee and everybody in Hillsborough Township, and God bless America!
And now, here are some highlights from the Township Committee Liaison Reports.
Everybody should save the date for our annual Family Fun Day and fireworks, which is June 25th. So remember, it's before 4th of July, June 25th. So Autton Road School Field, starting at 5:00 PM with the attractions and inflatable games, live music from a band called Southern Steel. They're a southern rock tribute band, and at dusk, our fireworks.
But before we start, I know, Mr. Goodman Delphord, had something to discuss. Maybe to you, Mr. Bernstein, I, we have, I know we have certain ways that we're not supposed to be politicizing or creating any type of impact against applications or the board influencing. We have people in the back of the room handing signs out regarding this, and I don't think that's appropriate in the middle of a planning board. So I would ask that we remove those signs and refrain from doing any sign work, or I believe there's petitions being, this is not the right forum, you could take that outside if you'd like to do it.
And I would concur with the board members' comments regarding such. If individuals want to seek people's signatures on a petition, they should do it outside of the boardroom. This is ostensibly a quasi-judicial situation, and they should not be holding up cue cards or signs that which only the board members can potentially see. They shouldn't be handed out or placed up regarding any application in general, or this one in particular.
Mr. Chairman? I think that thing was off. All right. Considering there are fewer than about 10 minutes left, we would ask to be able to return with more planning testimony and more testimony regarding the minor subdivision and the variance from Section 35 of the MLUL. We'd request to have that on the 8th, and have the application for 303 Amwell bumped to, with notice at that meeting, without further notice, but stated on the record at that meeting, be bumped to. Mr. Maskey, what's the next available slot after that?
I won't be here. Let me get that straight. So Redcom has a already noticed application for September 8th.
Correct. Correct.
-on Amwell Road. And what you're proposing is to carry tonight's application to September eighth with no notice-
Correct.
-and bump, well, because it's the same applicant agreeing to bump the Amwell Road application, which would then be announced that night. So anybody who was already noticed would come out for nothing. Um, the next available date is December first.
December first.
December first.
December first.
December first.
And we'd be willing to, uh, take that date.
Okay, I think we also need to ask the objector if-
Ready?
If you're okay with that.
We talked, hold. Hold. Look. Is the applicant still proposing to carry this meeting a week and putting off the other meeting that's been noticed to the public for next Thursday? Is that what you're proposing?
Correct. We'd announce on the record that the, uh, noticed three oh three Amwell Road would be carried to December first.
Well, Mr. Chairman-
We'd have to do that next week, actually.
With all due respect, we have people who have been noticed for a meeting next Thursday night-
Correct.
-who are not necessarily, some of whom are here tonight, we know, who have not necessarily put in their status, who may want to be heard on that issue, who are going to come here next Thursday night and want to, want to know why their application isn't on because of the situation. I would go one step further. I don't think a week necessarily members the board is sufficient to receive whatever planning testimony and reports you're going to need to receive-
That was my point also.
-regarding this application.
Seven days for the holiday.
Because if the applicant intends to bring a planner here for testimony, I would recommend to the board that we get a planning report, like we get from every other expert from an applicant, so that, A, the, the board is aware of what the claims are, as well as Mr. Masky, Mr. Hay, and myself, and the public at large as to what the claims are for the deviation from forty fifty-five D thirty-five. So I don't think the board should consider the request to carry this meeting one week without notice and then try to deal with the issues that will obviously come up next week for an application that would then have to ask for a continuation of its notice without notice at next week's meeting, having dragged all the people on that part of town in for that application.
I agree.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I also might add, as I discussed with Mr. Masky before, one of the things that, when you're preparing any type of subdivision, whether it be considered a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, that's typically prepared by a licensed land surveyor. And this estimation with respect to, you know, what, uh, Mr. Masky had stated before under the law, um, you know, it needs to be looked at as such. You can do a subdivision by deed, but you can also do a subdivision by plan. And we haven't seen any estimation in terms of if it is going to revert back to a flag lot, and they are going to have to seek some type of relief from the board, which may be granted. The fact of the matter is that we want to be able to see that on paper, understand that as well as understand any associated easements that might be created, but not just to remain caught, if there's a cross easement in the stem of the flag, but also on the subject lot that's being subdivided for the proposal.
Doesn't, um, also if it's- Changes the footprint of the lot itself, doesn't the stormwater calculations and all the other things that have been done, does that have to be redone as well, or, or that not, not necessarily?
No, no, Mr. Joy, it, it's not. It is more or less, as Mr. Masky alluded to, the applicant has to come for subdivision approval first. Subdivision has a series of line work and what have you. It's always created by the licensed land surveyor. As long as there's no deviation from that in ownership of, uh, let's say, utilities and what have you are associated on each lot, they will be differentiated and understood. And I believe the applicant's engineer would be able to elaborate whether or not it's not just cross easements, but also cross utilities that may be established in the stem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I feel like it's a good idea.
I think we have our answer. We'd just ask that, um, it be carried to the next available meeting, I believe it's December first, uh, twenty twenty-two, without further notice, and, uh, we'd be advised that if a meeting does open up, uh, and there's time to notice it, that we would be able to do so.
It's looking more like a chart.
We'll just note that, you know, it's, applications get bumped all the time. In this case, the applicant came up and said they did not receive sufficient notice, you know. Giving them to the eighth would certainly allow sufficient notice, and we're changing our order at the request of the board, our order of presentation, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I offer up a whole compromise?
Please do.
Your client is also eleven seventy Millstone LLC, are they not?
Yes.
Which is currently scheduled for a November third meeting. I don't know if they've noticed the public yet on that application.
Might be a bit early.
The alternative is to continue this application to November the third, and therefore, the eleven seventy Millstone will be heard at some point in time thereafter.
Good.
Yeah. Got four minutes.
Okay, so-
David?
Yeah, okay. November third.
Third.
So this, tonight's application will continue to November third. We're gonna need an extension of time decision with-
We'll provide that.
Okay.
Through the end of December. No, there will be-
No further notice.
No further notice relative to this hearing. What the board is being asked is to continue this application without further notice to November the third, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty PM, or assume thereafter as the matter may be heard before this board without further notice, an extension on the time of decision rule through the end of December twenty twenty-two, which Mr. Fisher, I believe, is signing his life-
I'm signing the extension right now.
And just to be clear, uh, the other application would be able to be noticed for, uh, December first. The one that was previously scheduled for November third.
So the Millstone River Road-
Correct.
-would be December first.
Okay.
We'll give you that slot.
But that'll be off the notices.
Right, correct.
Right, and the, the Amwell Road application originally and still scheduled for next Thursday.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, so-
Need a motion.
Thank you.
Yep, so I need a motion to continue this hearing to November third with the time of decision extended to the end of the year. Without further notice, and just so that, uh, we'll get to that. That, that's all we need.
It's almost.
Second.
Okay, can I do one?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So just to repeat, everyone, tonight-
My only comment would be, um, I, I understand, you know, we'll, we'll make this accommodation, but these are all separate applications. And, you know, I, I don't want to get into a scenario that every time there's a snafu, we play musical chairs with our applications. They're, they're set up for a reason, and if, if you're not prepared to deal with them, then we, we have to react accordingly. We, we've made this accommodation, I'm, you know, I understand why, but it's not going to be an ongoing matter where every time something happens, we're gonna, we're gonna move you into another spot for another application because it's the same owner.
Understood, but to be fair, we had less than an hour this evening, so.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Mr. Fisher, you may want to sit down. I am recommending to the board that the applicant provide at least two weeks in advance of the next hearing, a planning report from its planner in support of this subdivision application, as well as all the variances being sought by the applicant separate and apart.
Uh, Mr. Bernstein, typically you've been able to do that by testimony.
Well, the problem is, Mr. Fisher, that unfortunately with these applications, and it's a conversation I'm gonna have with the board in general, um, it's becoming harder and harder for the public and for the board to address variance applications when the only testimony the board gets and the public gets is a planner showing up and telling us why it does or does not meet the requirements when we ask everybody else who comes up before the board as a professional to provide a report in advance and respond to the applicants, to the, to the board professionals. So I'm making that recommendation for this, and don't be surprised if you see it in elsewhere.
Okay, so that would be October twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so just to reiterate, tonight is continuing to November third. Um, next week's, um, applicant, uh, Amwell Road is still on, and then, um, the one from Millstone River Road appears to be getting scheduled to December first.
Well, it'll-
But will, that will be advised.
The, the individuals will receive the appropriate notice in advance at this time.
Right, but, but it's doubtful that it would be heard before December first.
It would not be heard before.
It will not be heard.
All right, okay. All right, so next we do have the executive session. So, Mr. Bernstein, do you need to read the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, I am seeking an executive session pursuant to-
You still have a meeting going on.
Pursuing to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act ten colon four dash twelve B eight, pardon, B, that, uh, we go into executive session for purposes of attorney-client privilege related to the Homestead Road LLC application, and will any other matters under the guise of the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
I will make the motion to move into executive session.
I will second.
Okay, any final comments?
The, the governing, the board will come out of executive session and may or may not take action related to the discussions in the executive session, but will take no action relative to any application per se.
Correct, so we will come at it and close this meeting officially, so. Okay, with that, we'll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Bring him in, Delphore.
Yes.
LaPani.
Yes.
Richard Grilling.
Yes.
Chris Rush.
Yes, so we're into executive session, and we will-
Back room.
-come out in a bit.
We'll be back. Yep. Hey, big buck.
Bring the, bring the candies.
I know you're going to miss these, and you're going to be three months late, so I'm going to send you some. 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 I'm going to send you some.
and anti-weather ceiling.
Mayor Sean Leponti read into the record a proclamation honoring June as Pride Month.
Now, therefore, we proclaim that we, the mayor and the Hillsborough Township Committee, do hereby recognize June as Pride Month and urge all residents to recognize the contributions made by the members of the LGBTQ community and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty.
Here are the latest grant awards through the Affinity Federal Credit Union Hillsborough Rewards credit card that benefits nonprofit organizations within Hillsborough that support the youth and seniors of our community.
On behalf of the Junior Raider Football Organization, I want to thank you for your continued support. This check will go towards new football helmets this year.
We're on the Board of Steps Together. It's a nonprofit here in Hillsborough that supports families in Somerset County that are impacted by a medical crisis. This grant today will be used to buy a tent for our many events to help bring awareness.
This check will go towards a new lightweight wrestling mat, so thank you so much.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Baseball League, this check will be used towards our buddy program.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Youth Lacrosse, which is the boys lacrosse program in town, I'd like to thank the mayor and the committee for this money, which will go to helmets and shoulder pads for our players.
On behalf of the Hillsborough Rocket, it's a rocket, we want to thank the credit card committee and everybody in Hillsborough Township, and God bless America.
And now, here are some highlights from the Township Committee liaison reports.
Everybody should save the date for our annual Family Fun Day and fireworks, which is June 25th. So remember, it's before 4th of July, June 25th. So Autton Road School Field, starting at 5:00 PM with the attractions and inflatable games, live music from a band called Southern Steel. They're a southern rock tribute band, and at dusk, our fireworks extravaganza begins. Bring a chair or blanket along with some snacks.
One of the really nice events that we've done over the last four years, and we're coming up on our fifth annual Restaurant Week. It's going to be held September 27th through October the 2nd. More information will obviously be forthcoming as we move forward. Just wanted to give both the residents and our local restaurants the opportunity to know that we do plan on doing that again this year. It's a great opportunity to get out and try some of the restaurants in town that maybe you haven't had a chance to get to yet.
For any ground pool, your permit will remain open until you receive all final approvals, including a final engineering inspection. Engineering Department would like to advise residents that the contract for the 2022 road paving project will be awarded at tonight's meeting. Focus of the projects will be sunrise development, which includes the following roads: Westcott, DeCamp, Suffin, Saxon, Thatcher, Shepherd, Bigley, Danley, and Earnest. That includes approximately two miles of development roadways, which will also upgrade handicap ramps and drainage inlets at the latest standards.
And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Hillsborough Police Department for their presence at Amsterdam Schools Field Day. Here is what we heard about your presence at that event. The officers were very visible and friendly and interacted in a positive manner with our students throughout the day. They even engaged in our annual tug-of-war.
Recently, here at the municipal complex, we held an active shooter training exercise. This training is very important to ensure everyone's safety.
Mayor Leponti here, we just finished our active shooter training here at the municipal building. The team did great, we learned a lot of things, and I'm very proud of our PD and our staff for keeping Hillsborough safe.
Until next time, this is Pamela Borack for News Around Town Hillsborough. I'll see you around.
By the way. Well, to parish and and pastor. Well. I wonder if that doesn't help me constantly. It's a real civil life issue. So I need more. Now we're very bad. Yep. They have our. What you're doing. You know, it's like that profession. They're like, oh, but they don't want to do that. Anyway, so. I don't know, you're working. You're like, well, like, we're like, we're kind of cool stuff, you know, like. If you're sorry. But there's. You see middle sides and some sides. And I just tell them. They're all packed back. For a little shot, he's a little shot. When it comes to that was really important. They just like this wave shot. I mean, you're careful, it comes in there. I see camera. The camera. So that. Pretty bad. I mean, it's important to watch. They don't, you know. What they're still doing. Oh, there is. They're doing. That's what I'm going to. I'll be. I'll be. Okay. I think. I think. We're. Actually. I know. He's. He has. He's. I'm. I'm. Yeah. I would. I got to talk about before that. Well, it's. He was. I feel like. I'm. What you. And here. They don't hurt. And. People. We have. Some. They can give. This. Well. Okay. So what? Well, we actually. But what should be. And we can. So of course. Really. That's what. Well. The. I know. Right. It's. I. I. See, I don't. So. Yeah, I know. I didn't. I can't. We can't. We don't do more than that. Yeah. Yeah. Or. I've. We do. No. We. 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 That's. I think. It's fine. There's. And. But. Yeah. So. I. But it's. Well, one hundred. Right. Trash. Like. Some. You know. Or. So. I. And. We are. So. So. That'll be part of things. Fourteen hours. Five. You know, that kind of deal. So we see. You're probably expecting the likes. You know, they want to go. I mean, double. So you want that. So. But they were. That's. I don't know. No. Took him. They're. 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 They're silly. They're. They're. Um. So. Let's get. There was that. That really worked. Uh. Yes. And. So. It's. Sure. Why you? Yeah. Are you reading the video right? Um, not the. About two minutes. Oh, you saw. Yeah. Like. Yeah. During surgery. I think. They. What? We said you were. You're not. What? You're. I. Well, you're. They have to pay for it. Can't be. That's the big. You won't eat out of there. I. I'm. That's. Oh, man. I'm. Power. I'm. So. I was. I'm. They. But. It's. The best. So. Yeah. In fact. It's. You know. Wait. So. Yeah. I'm. I'm. So. I'm. I think. So. We deserve. The. All. Oh. In. That way. And then. An hour. They also. They just. So that wasn't to go on. We can. Ah, so it's. Off. With that one. Of course. Long. Yeah. Actually. Yeah. This. Right. It's. And. I remember. I. How. Right. That. Boy. And. Back then. If I saw those stuff from like. You. You. There. Kick. But I don't. Video. Twenty. Always. Now. I was. Yeah. You took. Like. So. One. So. I. I mean. So. Somebody. This. All. Like. The last night. It's. Always like. Yeah. It's often. They. The. With that. Not. So. We. Just. I'm. We. Then. So. Yeah. You know. But I was. So. Like. Is it? You just get away. Straight to the leg. The first day. I just. From. Because. To. How you funny? That. I did that. Did that. You were flying. The water. Down. I mean. I like. What? I'm. You. Cut. You're like. You're like. Woman. Wow. Life. So. In regard. That's what. A few days. So. You're. Wow. Really. So. This. This. It's. Right. So. It's. Eight. Three. That's. In. One. You. You're. Oh, sorry. We should. I. So. Well. So. We. I. I. Oh, yeah. Right. I see. I'm. I might. I. 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 My. Die. Die. Do. Of course. And. What? I'm. I don't. Get. So. You. It's. You. So. So. They're. Right. I'm. Again. That. You. Got. You. That. Like. That. Was. Real. Job. So. Much. That. Of course. You know. It's like. I. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. We. So. We. We. So. Actually. Oh, I. Yeah. So. Hopefully. Yeah. Big. But. Right. Right. Yeah. Yeah. You know. You. All. Right. Oh. They. Yeah. Yeah. Then. It's. Then. You. Have. Later. That was. Just. I. Have. Just. All of them in here. So. Right. Let's. Let's. I like. That. I. Very. I said. I wasn't. But. I. Well. I. That. It's. I. Really. Work. Never. But. I. I'm. I. I. Get up there. I. Say. But. Wow. That's. So. I. With that. Do. I. You. Also. Bar. I. I. You. That's. Only. The. How. First. You're. I'm. I'm. For. Open. Out. I. You know. That. You. Sure. Everything. We. They're. Like. Two. You know. Super. Go. So. Like. So. So. And. They. I. Probably. I. Right. Yeah. Do. So. Fine. I don't think. You. All. Work. You know. Yeah. I get it. I think. You. I love. That. They. Much. About. This. You're right. The most people. You guys. People. Play. Excuse. Hello. I. Some. It's. The. So. That's. People. So. You know. I had. I. 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 He. But. That. He. Didn't sound. Way. He's the kind of guy. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Wait. For. Part. That's. Yeah. Not. I guess. It. I'm. But. I. Down. It. Really. Like. Four. Six. I. Go. About. So. Wait. I. You. No. I. She. Hmm. Yeah. Well. You. Fantastic. So. You have. You know. That. Oh. So. You. So. You. Fly. You. Fly. You. Fly. I. Should. Be. The. I'm. I'm. Oh.